We want you to look over Virginia first.
What?
Look over for... (laughing)
Yeah, it's heavy. It's heavy on one side. But we can handle it.
That tomorrow?
Yeah.
No Wednesday.
Yeah. I like to call this meeting to order. And just as a reminder, there's been a couple of citizens in the audience who said that they couldn't hear us when we spoke, so let's try to speak into our microphones today.
That's you doing.
Be it... Be it that all the board supervisors hear about entering the closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, de-motion salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific offices, appointees, and employees of any public body. And that would be the Economic Development Authority that we'll talk about. And discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held real property where a discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And that is former Blacksburg Middle School property. To have a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye. We're in closed meeting.
This is weird.
Good evening, and welcome to our Board of Supervisors meeting. What I need now from the board is a motion to go out of closed meeting.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to go out of closed meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Certification of closed meeting whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Hit a motion.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
I was not present for the meeting, and unfortunately, due to a jury trial and the jury not returning a verdict, I did not get here until after all the business had been conducted. So I don't think it would be appropriate for me to vote.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
For us one abstaining.
Next order of business is our invocation. This is a period where the Board observes a moment of silence to reflect on the business at hand. And after we observe the moment of silence, we'll be led in a pledge by Mr. Meadows, our county administrator.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Our next order of business is public address. This is an opportunity for citizens to come and speak to the Board. And I have five people who have signed up. And each of you will have five minutes. Come to the microphone, state your name and address. And the first person we have signed up is Mr. David Pierce.
Good evening, I'm David Pierce, 2523 Cherry Lane, Blacksburg, Virginia. I would like to make a specific comment on the school board's proposed budget. I will address the long-term maintenance of the physical plan. Line items 68 and 69 provide for total expenditure on this topic of $454,000. Capital maintenance is easy to neglect until something actually breaks or leaks. Then, there is hopefully funds in the budget to cover the cost. Or as in the past, the school board has come to the Board of Supervisors for emergency funds. In effect, this allows the school board to get more funds for the school system without actually budgeting for it. This is in no way to protect the investment in our school system made by the citizens of Montgomery County. The school board, at the direction of the Board of Supervisors, needs to develop a sustainable capital maintenance budget. Also, line 69 should be labeled, should not be labeled, replace one-time funds for building, repairing, roof maintenance, but rather ongoing capital maintenance program. This will more accurately reflect its need and usage. Based on the CardoTech report of 2012, this line item should be increased about sevenfold for a sustained program. I repeat, in order to protect the capital investment of the Montgomery County school system, budget items lines 68 and 69 needs to be increased by about 700 percent. And just because the report only goes through 2017, it doesn't mean that these needs stop. In fact, the majority of the 20 years after 2017, the anticipated capital needs exceed $10 million a year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Meadows, members of the Board. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. You don't have, I don't envy you at all. You have a hard decision to make. I understand the presentation is tonight. I'm here to ask you to support the needs-based budget of the school board. Like I said, it is a needs-based budget. When I spoke to this Board the last time, I expressed some difficulties that our employees have and will have if the budget is not funded. So just please keep that in mind, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Murray.
Sorry, it's sorry. Good evening, my name is Bill Murray of the 401 Davis Lane, and I wanted to give you guys my version of the update on the Fieldstone project. It's currently, not all the residents have a relocation plan, which is one of the conditions for this to go forward. Those that do, you talk to them, they're not happy with it because they're losing their home. Some of them own their homes free and clear. I know it's a trailer, but it's, it may not be much to somebody on the outside, but they do own it free and clear. They don't have a mortgage. And they're paying about $300 a month for rent, water, sewer, trash pickup, and snow removal when that comes. It's a big issue. It's driving residents out of Blacksburg and out of the county because there is nothing that affordable in the county, and definitely not in the town. The next tier is about 600 a month, and it goes up from there. There is also problems with the project's stormwater calculations. There's an environmental engineer who's not here tonight. He's independent. He did the calculation. He found some serious errors in that they're using acreage that was designated for retention, dry retention, in the calculation, and changes the whole, the number. Those pounds will not be dry for long if they run with the numbers they've gotten out. My fear is that when they shut down that 401 side of the trailer park to move, trying to move everybody to 301, which is going to, temporary solution, when they shut that down, there would be no place in Blacksburg and perhaps the county where people on the lower end of the economic spectrum can afford to live, where persons with disabilities can afford, and persons living on a social security retirement lot can afford to live. And it's driving people out of the town and the county. People are looking at Giles, nothing against Giles, but I never would have thought of Giles as a favorable alternative to Montgomery County. So it's a bigger problem, and it's not, there are, it's fraught with problems. It's not what it looks. And definitely, the devil is in the details underneath. And I applaud the Board for not being in step with the town and offering the incentives and the tax rebate, because I think it's, I don't think it's good for us. Thank you.
Mr. Tom Sherman.
Good evening, I'm Tom Sherman. I live at 1,005 East Roanoke Street in Blacksburg. I'm here tonight in support of affordable housing. Been interested in affordable housing probably 30 years. Since 1998, been pretty much intimately active in pursuing affordable housing. Last five years, I've been on the Board of Habitat for Humanity of New River Valley. As you know, the Habitat for Humanity of New River Valley is supporting the Fieldstone project on the Blacksburg Estates. Some of our experience has been, well, as you know, Habitat, the main goal of Habitat is to make safe, affordable, decent housing available to people. And our target is between the 30 and 50 percent of the median income. We've had enormous difficulty in finding buyers for houses, which has led to the conclusion that there's a great need in Montgomery County for affordable rental properties, both for workforce housing as well as for seniors. This project represents one of the best opportunities we have that I've seen over 30 years to provide a project that is income-based in terms of allowing people to live in safe, affordable, decent housing. So I encourage you to support this project. There still are some details to be worked out, I know, but on the other hand, there's been an enormous amount of time and effort that has gone into developing this project. Finally, as you know, the tax credits that make this project doable are very competitive. So the more support that the county can contribute to this project, the better opportunity we have to have this project, which would be a real asset for the whole county. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's April Demonts? Demonts? Yeah.
Good evening, my name is April Demonts. I'm at 213 Woodbine Drive in Blacksburg. I'm here tonight, I'm going to echo a lot of what Mr. Sherman just said. I'm here tonight in support of the Fieldstone Development Project for Blacksburg. I am a property manager in the town of Blacksburg. I deal almost exclusively with students, so I'm very familiar with how the rent prices in Blacksburg over the decade that I've been working there at least have gone up, up, up year after year. And it's really priced a lot of folks out of the town. Myself, spent many years as a single mother, living in Christiansburg and dying to live in Blacksburg where I worked, to minimize my commute and never could afford it. So I'm extremely supportive of this project personally for those reasons, but also because I view this project as extremely consistent with the goals of denoviding and comprehensive plans for both the town of Blacksburg and Montgomery County. Specifically, this supports the county's goal of the promotion of development of public and private partnership to address the housing needs of low to moderate income residents in our community. And it also shows great commitment to local and regional cooperation. As I'm sure you're all aware, the town of Blacksburg has had two votes on this development, the first to approve the rezoning, and the second to approve the financial incentives. And then we're coming tonight to ask for more financial incentives from the county. This will really help Fieldstone get the tax credits it needs to be able to move forward with this project, which will be a great benefit to the county residents. Additionally, the project is going to be built to EarthCraft standards and will have professional onsite management. Those are two great things that you don't get with a lot of construction. And this development, finally, represents a huge opportunity for Blacksburg and Montgomery County residents to have greatly expanded access to high-quality, affordable family and senior housing. Please support the resolution tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That's all the people who have signed up tonight, but if it's any one of you who did not have an opportunity to sign up and would like to speak to the Board, and you can do so at this time. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close our public address session. Next item is addendum. Do we have an addendum, Mr. Meadows?
We do not have an addendum, nor do we have a consent agenda tonight.
Well, that's good. Be moving right along. Next item is into work session. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussing the following. That's the FY 2015-2016 budget. And Mr. Meadows, we're making a presentation. Motion to go into?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Bye.
Okay. Mr. Meadows, it's your show.
Actually, there's several folks here that'll be speaking to you tonight. Carol will be here shortly with some comments, and I will recognize Mark and Angie here as well this evening. This is our annual time to talk about our fiscal year 2016 budget, which is hard to believe, but time is nigh, and we'll be working on this over the next couple of weeks. I'd like to make a few introductory comments to the budget before I get into the detail of what our presentation's going to be for this year. As you're well aware, this past year, we had our general reassessment of county real estate, which becomes effective on January 1. In years past, reassessments were a time for local governments to catch up with revenue shortfalls by capturing some of the growth in the real estate property values. For example, back in 2007, our reassessment yielded a 34 percent real estate property value increase. However, the Great Recession of 2008 dramatically changed the revenue outlook for many communities. Instead of looking forward to how to apply new real estate tax revenues to programs and capital needs, many communities realized that further cuts would be needed simply to balance their existing budgets. Montgomery County has been very fortunate in that over the past two reassessments, we have seen slight increases in real property values. Some of our neighboring counties can't say that, so we've been very fortunate. For the 2015 reassessment, the county experienced an approximate 2 percent increase in value. By state law, the county is allowed to retain 1 percent of the value with the reassessment. This 1 percent value provides for an additional $700,000 in real estate tax revenue for fiscal year 2016, and new construction is estimated to add an additional $400,000 to that. However, this projected revenue growth is offset by more than $4.1 million in additional funding requests from our county departments this year, which does not include any increase in compensation or benefits for our employees. County departments, including constitutional officers, requested a total of 15 new positions in this year's budget, in the upcoming year's budget. Also, $3.9 million in additional funding is requested by the Montgomery County Public Schools for fiscal year 2016. So as you can see, the growth is slow, the needs are many. The proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 budget for Montgomery County is $175.5 million, which represents a 3.7 million or 2 percent increase from the current fiscal year. Of the 3.9 million requested in additional funding for the schools for the upcoming year, I'm recommending an increase in funds of $1,975,205. It's also my understanding that since the General Assembly wrapped up, there may be some additional funds coming to the schools of about $400,000 or $500,000, so that will further close the gap. But the county's funding right now, I'm recommending at $1,975,205. Based on the reassessment, our revenue neutral tax rate would be 88 cents. Currently, our tax rate is 89 cents. I'm proposing that the real estate tax rate for fiscal 2015-16 remain steady at the current rate of 89 cents. By doing this, the 89 cent rate will continue to earmark 2 cents for the school capital construction fund for future school capital projects, and 1 cent for the county capital construction fund, and also to replace fire and rescue equipment. No changes are recommended to the county's personal property taxes for fiscal year 2016. One of the key things that I want to talk to you about tonight, and it was an emphasis as we put together the budget for this upcoming year, relates to our employees. This Board has shown great leadership over the past several years in addressing our core priorities, public education and public safety. From 2009 through the upcoming budget, the county has provided over $8.7 million in additional funding to operate our public schools to help offset some of the shortfalls in state funding. The county has also provided nearly $175 million in capital funding for two new elementary schools, two new high schools, and the renovation of the former high school to a new middle school. All during a sluggish economy and with minimal increases in property values. In public safety, the county has invested over $40 million in the construction of a new courthouse and the renovation of a former courthouse for use as a public safety consolidated 911 authority facility. These investments will ensure that our citizens and public safety officials have secure, efficient facilities for many years into the future. Also, over the past seven years, the Board has increased funding by over $5 million to our sheriff's office to adequately serve our citizens. The Board's vision in addressing these critical needs in schools, facilities, and in public safety is to be commended. I'm confident that the county has done an excellent job in addressing these areas over the past six years. For the upcoming budget year, though, I ask that the Board assist in addressing another public aspect of our organization, and that is public service for our employees. The men and women who serve Montgomery County as Montgomery County employees are some of the most loyal and caring individuals I've ever had the pleasure of working with. Each day, they serve our citizens with dedication and with a sincere desire to help. Since 2010, employees have received three pay increases, in 2012, in 2013, and 2014. The county's pay and classification plan has not been regraded since 2012, which means that starting salaries for county positions have not changed since that time. Many of our neighboring localities have conducted and implemented new pay plans, including the town of Christiansburg, which is challenging the county's ability to attract and retain the best employees by not being able to offer competitive wages for all positions. A recent study of our neighboring jurisdictions and comparable localities to Montgomery County indicates that our current pay plan is, on average, about 3 percent lower than the comparison group across the board. Even more striking, a comparison of department head-level positions in the same group indicates that we are 13 percent behind our neighbors in that area. In order to attract and retain the best talent possible to serve our citizens, we desperately need to address our competitive position with regard to pay. As part of the fiscal year 2015-16 budget, I'm proposing that the county's pay and classification scale be regraded upward by 2 percent. This means that the minimum, midpoint, and maximum salaries in each of our 32 pay grades will be increased by 2 percent. It also means the county employees will move 2 percent upward in his or her pay grade as well, which will result in an increase in salary for them. I'm further proposing that the county set aside funds to also allow for a 2 percent merit increase for non-provocationary employees based on the employee's anniversary date. Some employees have anniversaries in July and August, some don't have them until the following May or June. In the past five years, the county has only funded one merit increase for employees. That was in 2013. Merit increase will also allow us to begin to repair the compression issues that we have within certain pay grades and inequity among pay in our current employee base. I want to talk just a minute about the schools, constitutional offices, and the Fire and Rescue Commission. This proposed budget provides $44 million in county funds for the school operating budget, which represents an increase in funding of 4.7 percent over the current fiscal year. While the recommended budget does not meet the full needs of the school's funding request, the county has increased local funding for the schools by over $12 million in the last 10 years. This is equivalent to over 16 cents on the real estate tax rate and does not include the additional debt service that the county has incurred for new school construction or other one-time funds that have been provided to address capital or other school needs. The projected fiscal year 2015-2016 cost of the five constitutional officers totaled $17.6 million, an increase of about 1 percent over the current fiscal year. Of the 15 new positions that were requested by county departments, which in this budget we're not recommending any of them, but in the 15 positions that were requested, 11 were for positions in the Sheriff's, Treasurers, and Commissioner of the Revenue's Office. The continued increase in cost of the localities to provide for these state-mandated offices is an area that we must continue to bring to the attention of our legislators for relief. Included in the proposed fiscal year 16 budget is $153,000 in additional funding to the sheriff's office to help pay for overtime, mobile data terminals, uniforms, and medical supplies. An additional $71,761 is included in the budget for anticipated increases in utilities related to the operation of the new public safety building and in other county facilities. Again this year, I want to commend the Fire and Rescue Commission. Our Fire and Rescue Commission continues to address funding needs for the county fire departments and rescue squads. Again this year, although the initial requests were greater than the available funding, by working together, this commission was able to once again allocate funds within their group to address specific needs and remain within the available funding. This commission continues to set the example of how multiple agencies within a county should work together, and I greatly appreciate their efforts. I have a few other comments I want to make in conclusion, but at this point, I'd like to ask Carol if she would come forward. We have a presentation that has a number of slides that get into more specifics regarding the numbers, and then I'll be back to wrap up and answer any questions.
Okay, there are a number of us who are going to be doing this presentation tonight, and so while I'm pulling this up on the screen, Angie's going to be passing out the, for those who want an actual budget book, she has those available. The book and the presentation tonight are both in your Dropbox, but we have paper copies and a book for both of those if anyone wants.
I don't need the presentation, I have that for being ready. Thank you.
Okay, as a matter of introduction, I'm going to go briefly over the process here that we followed up to date. Then I'm going to turn it over to Angie, and she's going to talk about some specific structural changes that make things look a little different in the budget from what they have before. So what have we done so far? Well, on January the 12th, we had a public hearing for citizen comments. On January the 26th, you heard from Mark with an update of the ongoing revenue, everything except the reassessment in it. February the 9th, you heard from the school board with a presentation regarding their request. And between February and And between February and tonight, we've been looking at revenue collections, looking at the base budget to see what could be absorbed, and preparing the proposed budget that's before you tonight and the tax rate that it would take in order to fund that. Here we are proposing the, presenting the proposed budget. We're also, I believe you received something from Craig asking if we could plan for a budget work session on Monday. We've got that tentative on here mainly because we need to come up with the advertised budget and the advertised tax rate. That is where what you advertise, you can go down, but you can't go up. And so it's important to know what you all would like to advertise for public hearing. Your public hearing in, for both the budget and the tax rate is April the ninth. We have to advertise that at least seven days ahead of time, and it takes several days to get it in the paper. So we want to make sure that we're on schedule for setting the advertised rate and the proposed budget. So if everyone, if, we'll ask again at the end of the session tonight, if everyone can make Monday night and we can plan on a work session, then we'll address any additional questions. You all have any issues, so we can be prepared to establish the tax rate and the budget to advertise. After the public hearing on March ninth, we have scheduled a special meeting. It's on Monday, April the twentieth. I think this follows similar to what we did the last time, where you would actually vote on the final budget and the tax rate. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Angie, and she can go over structural adjustments.
As Carol said, I'm going to talk to you about some structural adjustments that we make this year. Frequently, we make adjustments to improve the budget document or changes to the process to make it more smooth, and sometimes those are minor changes. This year, we have a few changes that are more significant that we want to bring to your attention. The first item I'm going to talk about relates to transfers, and that's funds that are transferred out of the general fund to the other funds of the school operating and debt service funds as examples. We're also going to talk about how we're going to handle some recovered costs differently than we have in the past. Many groups use our budget document. You use it, and the staff uses it for planning purposes. It's also used as a comparative tool, both for budget versus actual amounts for the county and to compare us to other localities. Bond rating agencies and bondholders use this document for those purposes. And as you know, as when we present the audited financial statements to you each year, the financial reporting requirements oftentimes change, and because we compare the budgeted numbers to those financial documents, sometimes those changes drive the budget process changes. Several years ago, some financial reporting requirements changed the way we report transfers, and those are the changes that we're going to talk about tonight that are driving the presentation of this budget. Since the county may be in the position in the next few years to enter the bond market, we revised the budget format to more easily compare the budget with the audited financial statements. Previously, county dollars that were going to the other funds that were the transfers were shown as reductions in general fund revenues. But the way that we're going to show them now is we're going to actually count them twice, once in the general fund and again in the fund that they are spent out of. The total dollars presented in the budget is not going to change, but the general fund compared to previous budgets is inflated by these amounts, which again corresponds to the presentation in the financial statements. This chart shows the dollar impact behind these changes. The first column represents the budgeted expenditures, including the transfers to the other funds. The middle column shows the transfers that are going out to the other funds, and then the third column is more comparable to the amounts we've shown in the past. We have a new pie chart for you. This chart, again, just shows a summary of the information that was on the previous page. The education and debt service portions of this pie chart are marked much larger than they were when we showed you the general fund previously because they do include the transfers out. They don't present the total funds, so they don't show the state and federal money that the schools get. It's just our, the county's portion of the transfers to those funds. The other portion of the adjustments are less involved than the transfers, and they're similar to what was presented to you with the school, some changes to the school's budgets. Historically, we've made frequent appropriations for the recovery cost in the sheriff's office, for security that this deputy's worked, for other agencies, and also for Project Lifesaver. Rather than continue to do those on a case-by-case basis, we looked at how much we're appropriating throughout the year and included that revenue and expense in the budget this year, so there's no net effect, but it makes the total expenditures and total revenues go up by about a hundred and two thousand dollars. Again, that's not new money, it's just a different way of handling that to make the process a little more efficient. Another similar item is health insurance. Revenue and expenditures were both reduced by a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. This represents insurance payments that people who have left employment or retired from the county were making to the county to stay on our health insurance. After we became self-funded, that was accounted for a different way, and so we don't need to show those revenues and expenditures any longer, so that also is a net adjustment of zero. Now I'll turn this back over to Carol.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the money that we only spend one time, not in two places. Okay, the proposed budget, I have the worst time with this thing, a hundred and seventy-five point five-three million. As Angie talked about, there's a differentiation now between the general fund that includes all the transfers and what we're now calling general government functions, which is what you're used to seeing as the general fund. So let's start with a hundred and thirteen point one million. You subtract out the transfers to the other funds, which is the county dollars that are actually going to the other funds, and they're actually spent in those other funds. That leaves the, what we used to call the general fund or the county general government side of it at forty-five million. That's an increase of one point two-one million. And as Angie just talked about, some of that includes recovered costs, so all of that is not new dollars. Some of it is putting in additional funds, like the recovered costs in the sheriff's office, rather than do them by supplemental appropriation every year. The school operating budget is ninety-nine point five million. That's an increase of two point four-five, but yet again, all those dollars are not new dollars, as the schools did the same thing and incorporated some funds into the budget that they had been previously doing through a supplemental appropriation. Now Craig mentioned that there was some additional state money that was approved at the end of the General Assembly. That is not included in these amounts. We were putting numbers together at the end, and we did not have the opportunity to include those dollars in there, so there will be some additional funds in addition to what is shown in the proposed budget from the state. The school nutrition fund is at four point five-five million. The county capital fund is showing at point seven-three. That was normally, that is one penny on the tax rate, and considering that the tax rate has increased to seven hundred and thirty thousand, then we're showing six, point seven-three or seven hundred and thirty thousand from that one cent going to fire and rescue. Debt service is at almost twenty-four million. The school capital fund, the same thing, the two cents that are earmarked to go to school capital with the penny increasing, then that increases the amount going from one point four to one point four-six million. Also included is the Economic Development Authority incentive program, and that's at point three-eight. You add all those together, and you're back at the money you only spend once, not in two places, a hundred and seventy-five point five-three million. Where does that come from? Well, undesignated dollars are those dollars that we call county dollars, or I call county dollars, two point seven million. The new designated dollars in, in the general government side is about three hundred thousand. The new designated dollars for schools, about seven hundred thousand, although that includes the school nutrition program. And again, it does not include the additional funds from the state. All total, the increase over fifteen is three point seven million. The proposed real estate tax rate, as Craig mentioned, is, remains at eighty-nine cents. And again, the normal general fund pie that you're used to seeing looks something like this. It's smaller than the, what is now referred to as the general fund, but the proportions in these functions didn't change. Over fifty percent of the monies in the general government functions go to public safety and health and welfare. Reassessment, the two thousand fifteen reassessment, although it has been going on for the last twelve to sixteen months, it was actually effective January one, two thousand fifteen. The value increase, this is in total due to reassessment, is two percent. The value went from seven point three billion to seven point four-six billion. State law allows localities to keep one percent of the value increase from the general reassessment, which is seventy-three million. The revenue neutral tax rate would be eighty-eight cents. The proposed budget is at eighty-nine cents. By keeping the tax rate at eighty-nine cents and not rolling it back, it must be advertised as a one-cent increase. Undesignated dollars, or what I call the county dollars, those are, that are at the choice of the board of supervisors as to where they're spent. One percent of the value from the reassessment equals roughly seven hundred thousand. One cent on the tax rate, again, is roughly seven hundred thousand. Growth from just general new construction is four hundred thousand, so the total revenue coming from real estate, including the reassessment, one point eight million. As Mark presented back at the end of January, there are other revenue categories, some increases, some decreases. There was an increase in personal property, motor vehicle revenue. There was a decrease in recordation. When all that's said and done, it nets out to approximately point nine million in additional revenue. So when you add all those together, the total is two point seven million. Where does it go with the proposed budget? One point nine-eight million goes to schools. Almost seven hundred thousand goes to the county. Sixty thousand, as we mentioned, goes to school capital because of the increase in the penny, and thirty thousand goes to county capital for fire and rescue from the increase in the penny. What budget requests were we looking at? Well, we had a lot of them. The county requests, and this includes department requests, employee compensation, and everything that, where requests were made, four point eight million. The schools, three point nine million for a total of eight point seven million. You had two point seven in revenue, so the shortfall across the board, six million dollars. Some of the things, and I'm just going to hit the major highlights, I told Craig earlier, there's no color on these slides, they're mostly just black and white, mainly because it's just black and white stuff on here. It's not a whole lot. So I'm just going to hit some of the things that are required expenses. The county shared the nine-one-one authority. We have been participating in this, and as the year, years have gone on, each year, we've increased a little bit and a little more, and our share this year looks like, or is estimated, at fifty thousand. Health insurance for part-time employees, this is due to the Affordable Care Act, is estimated sixteen thousand. Increase in utilities, part of this has to do with just, it costs more, it's been colder, and we'll have twelve months' worth of utility costs for the public safety building, we believe we will, in the upcoming year, rather than the six months that we had budgeted. Bank fees in the treasurer's offices, most of you all may remember that on a supplemental appropriation in the current year, you appropriated eighteen thousand dollars to cover the fees that the bank is charging us now for our banking relationship. In order to get that in the budget, we need to build it in, so there's eighteen thousand dollars for banking fees built into this budget. The optical scan voting ballots, apparently the new optical scan voting machines require a different ballot, and the cost of those ballots for the election is estimated at seventeen thousand five hundred. Microsoft license costs, if you add devices, you add people, you have to pay Microsoft, and this is an increase provided to the amount we have in the budget to cover those fees. The health department, local match, this is held in special contingencies pending the state providing their share of the cost. It is one of the few state-funded functions where if we put in thirty-eight percent, then they give us back sixty-two percent in state funds, so we actually get more money from the state than we're putting in, which doesn't happen often these days. So all of those together are about two hundred and forty thousand. Public safety, I want to take a few minutes just to point out some things we included for public safety. Seventy-five thousand dollars, we built a line item into the sheriff's budget to either, and what I would say, your payoff, existing comp time balance or holiday balances or cover overtime going forward. That would be whichever would best meet the sheriff's needs. There is eighteen thousand dollars for additional medical and pharmaceutical costs. Apparently, we have more inmates and more inmates with serious conditions and more medicine required at both the regional jail and our local jail. Uniform replacement costs, we're adding twenty thousand dollars. They are currently spending about forty-four thousand dollars to cover uniforms, and they have a base of twenty-four, so we're trying to shore that replacement up so that they can cover all the replacements each year. MDTs, we talked about at the same time we did body cameras, we put forty in to do so many now, and this builds in forty thousand into the ongoing budget to have a replacement schedule so we can keep those replacements as needed. About eleven thousand dollars is an increase for fire and rescue incentives. There has been a plan in place to ensure that members with, I believe it's ten years' worth of service, get service rings, and this would be additional funds that would make sure that everyone would have that. In addition to that, the Fire and Rescue Commission, I believe, came up with a listing of things that they would like to see for a full program of recognition for the volunteers. Obviously, we can't do all of those at one time, but what this does is make sure that the rings can be covered and then put in some additional funds for a special recognition of those volunteers, and I don't know if they would select forty years of service or fifty years of service, but to have a special recognition, a plaque, maybe some type of banquet or something to recognize these people have given so many years of service. The last thing on public safety is the funding for emergency notification software, a grant paid for the actual software in the current year, and this is the maintenance costs or the ongoing renewal costs for next year. And as I understand, I believe that's being implemented this year, current. Okay.
Carol, have these last two slides, but it ties right in with mine, including the Mark, and I'll hijack the last two. remarks, and we'll hijack the last two.
I wondered why you were saying them.
Distributing pens, because we ration pens around here. Couple of concluding comments, and then I'll get back to the slides. I just wanted to mention, in addition to the things that Carol's talked about, during the budget preparation process, the county received requests for increased funds from outside agencies totaling over seventy-nine thousand dollars more than the current one-point-six million that we provide in the current fiscal year. Some of these requests were to expand or add services, and many were very worthy requests, and still other requests are mandated. The proposed budget does not recommend providing funding for any new outside agencies again this year, and only provides increased funds for those outside agencies where the funding is mandated. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I must note that once again this year, this budget has been very challenging to prepare. As Carol mentioned earlier, the slides, for the most part, very black and white, this is a very, honestly, a very plain and simple budget. There were a number of excellent requests from county departments for various needs, but without further increasing real estate property taxes, there was simply no additional revenues to address those requests. Also want to emphasize, while department directors and constitutional officers have made repeated requests over the past few years for new employees, this budget does not recommend adding positions. However, with the growing economy, excuse me, with the growth of population in the county and the recovering economy, it will be increasingly difficult to maintain existing county services without additional support in the years ahead. We have significant issues ahead with regard to school capital facilities in the Christiansburg strand, along with the development of a stormwater management program that's going to require user fees or other revenues or some combination of both to implement. These issues will put significant pressures on upcoming budgets to fund additional revenues to support these initiatives. In closing, I just wanted to say that I'm very blessed to have the assistance of Mark, Angie, Carol, Ruth, Susan Dickerson, and Judy Kaiser in preparing this budget information for you. It's always interesting to sit in a meeting with Carol and Mark and Angie, because Angie thinks like me, Carol thinks like Carol, and I'm not real sure who Mark thinks like yet. I'm still figuring that out. But what I've learned, and I mean this sincerely, it's a blessing, because if I can usually get something out of that group, it's pretty well-vain by the time it gets to you guys. We all work together to present you with the most accurate information that we can. Ruth provided support by reviewing and editing the message, which I want to tell you was no small feat either, because we were trying to get this done the end of last week, and we were chasing a snowstorm and another, other issue, so it's been challenging. The last slide that I asked Carol to leave up, just to talk about the next steps, as I mentioned earlier, we would like to schedule a work session with you next Monday, the sixteenth. That's, tonight is a whole lot of information just thrown at you, you haven't had a chance to absorb any of it, but hopefully with the books and the information that's online, you'll have an opportunity between now and next Monday to go through things.
Craig, do you think you'll know roughly whether it's gonna be four or five-hundred-thousand dollars in additional funds for the schools by next Monday?
I don't have, have we gotten a final number?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll have.
Yes.
Okay.
Four, four, five. Thank you. So we include that in the discussion. The next board meeting is two weeks from tonight, the twenty-third. We'd like to be in a position that night to establish the advertised budget and advertised tax rate. Again, as I emphasize every year, this is not what you're approving, this is what you're advertising. When you advertise the budget and tax rate, then you can't go above that. You can go below it, but you can't go above it. Also, if needed, we can have an additional work session before the PSA meeting on April sixth, and then the public hearing is on April ninth. As I've mentioned to you, the focus that we had this year on the budget was salary repair and taking care of what I call the third leg of the public, and that is our public servants that are here every day. I certainly appreciate your leadership and guidance as we move through the weeks ahead, and I'm confident that 2016 will be another year of great things for the county. And with that, if there's any questions or concerns, we'd be glad to take those now. Again, I know we've got work sessions coming up as well, but be glad to answer any general questions tonight.
Why don't you, or Craig, I don't know, get a consensus from the board to see about the sixteenth work session? So.
Okay. We'll start with six o'clock in NP two, okay?
Yeah.
All right, we'll do that for sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Matters?
This information, again, is in Dropbox, and also Ruth will get the big budget document linked on our website, so we'll have that for the public so they can start mulling through it as well, so.
And Craig, again, I want to thank you and your staff, and even some people that you probably didn't mention had a lot to do with this, because I'm sure that putting a document together like that took quite a bit of time, plus dealing with snowstorms and keeping everything focused and so forth. So from what I've seen so far, I mean, your work, you all's work is really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any?
Just ditto on what you said.
Well, you can say it again, they like to hear that stuff three or four different times. Okay. I think it's time for us to go out of work session.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second go out of work session. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Crewe?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Todd?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Mark and Angie, y'all don't have to leave, y'all can still stay at the party if you want to.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a brief recess for a few minutes?
Yes, we can, you know, about eight, ten minutes, you know.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Well, we'll reconvene. Our next item of business is new business, and it's subject A, Feale Stone Housing Development for Affordable Housing.
Mr. Chair, this is an item that we've had a presentation on last board meeting, and then we had a work session to give Mr. Park an opportunity to come and speak to some of the concerns that the board may have about this issue. And William, appreciate you being here again tonight, so if there's any questions or if the board has anything they want to ask of Mr. Park, he's here and willing to answer. But what we've done is placed a resolution in your packet this evening, if the board is so inclined, expressing the county's commitment of support to this project. What we've done, though, under the "now therefore be it" resolved, is we left a couple of areas blank for the board to consider, what level, if any, the board would like to pursue on that. Also, in your agenda, under tab A, is information, not only from Mr. Park with a plan, that's the third page, but also the first pages, one and two. Option one is, as Mr. Park proposed, the grant of a hundred percent of the new taxes up to ten years and a prorated grant for five years beyond that. It does cap the taxes at fifty-eight, eight-seventy-four. The option two is an annual grant of seventy-five percent of the taxes paid for fifteen years, up to fifteen, excuse me, up to fifty-eight, eight-seventy-four as well. So I guess at this, and option three was a hundred percent for ten years as well. So we've given you several options to look at. Carol and I both have our calculators tonight, so if you throw anything else out, we can try to figure that for you. But I guess at this point, Mr. Chair, we're looking for direction, if the board is so inclined to approve a resolution of support, and if so, at what level you'd be interested in providing that.
Comments from the board?
Craig, I just got a couple of questions, and I think I expressed this before.
You gotta do your microphone.
Sorry, thank you very much.
You were, yeah, you'll remind us.
In regards to this type of funding, have we in one of the towns provided this, these kind of incentives for residential housing before?
To my knowledge, we have not provided any incentive funds for affordable housing projects in the past from the county, we have not.
Now, there was a project that was out on Pepper's Ferry Road that we used some EDA funds for, I guess, a lower interest rate or a tax. Was it?
They didn't ask for anything, did they?
No. Who are you talking about?
The one fourteen across from the Elbow just go.
Nick Crass's project.
Oh, I didn't, I thought that went, didn't that go through EDAs, WDA funding?
I don't know if they financed it, we didn't provide any incentives.
No, no incentives, but there may have been some EDA as far as, as financing.
Providing incentives and financing.
That was, that was the first year I was here, and I'm not, I don't, I know there weren't any direct county dollars.
No incentives or anything of that, but because it's affordable housing, we don't have a housing authority, the law allows the EDA to provide, you know, financing, it's a vehicle, it's not, they're not providing cash.
Right.
They're providing a vehicle to get low, you know, interest rate.
And that's how this would work as well, is the dollars that would be provided as the incentive would flow through to the EDA, and the EDA would write the check.
I don't know if the chair is listening responsibly, from my point of view, I, I've never been a fan of having to offer incentives to businesses to come to Montgomery County. Unfortunately, everybody else is asking to offer those incentives, and if you don't play the game, you don't play.
You lose out.
And you lose out, and so we've had to do that in the past. My concern is, and we, we've turned down commercial requests for financial incentives for businesses that said that they would come here, but it's commercial or retail in nature. If we start doing this for residential, then it's gonna be, we're gonna have to do it every single time, or we're gonna at least have to open the door. And we're talking about a sizable amount of money over, the total grant, one is over seven-hundred thousand, the other proposal's six-sixty-two, and the other would be five-hundred-and-eight-eight-thousand, so almost six-hundred thousand. Over a fifteen-year time period, but yes, but that's a sizable amount of money.
I'm pretty straightforward, I do not think that we should touch it with even a ten-foot There's no offer of any pathways or any acreage set aside for people to go out and take a walk or a bench or anything. You know, heretofore Blacksburg has been famous for that, I don't know where they're coming from right now, but it really doesn't matter where they're at, but they have always been, Christiansburg also has always been wanting something for this, for the population that's gonna take over these houses. And I don't see any of that even getting ready to happen, but that's happening. So I was, I was hoping.
Mary, Don?
Do you have anything?
I'm just afraid if we do something, it'll start a trend that we had to continue on
Well, I've thought about it, and I'm torn on this one because I know that there is a need for affordable housing. There always has, but ever since I've been on this board, and when I first got on, I wondered why we didn't have a housing authority, you know, because I couldn't understand what, you know, where we were coming from. Okay, so I'm really torn because I know there's a need, and I consider the two towns to be part of the county, and I think it would show a cooperative movement to do something with the town. I'm torn because of the situation where I don't know if everybody has been, you know, set up where they need to be set up. I keep hearing that things aren't settled, and that this project won't go through until things are settled. I guess that's true. And the other thing that keeps coming to mind is the stormwater, which I keep trying to get an understanding of, because I, I don't understand how the town, the reputation they have in their engineering department, wouldn't see that this could be a problem after some of the pictures that we saw, so I'm not sure about that, because I'm not an engineer. So I feel really torn about it, it's like I want to do something, but I, I have reservations about doing it. If I could support something, it probably would not be option one, I would have to look at one of the other two options. And so doing, because as had been noted here, we've not done something like this before, so we're sort of putting our, our foot in the water. I do think that if you do do one thing, and other people come along behind and ask for things, that, you know, we're doing something that involves affordable housing, we're not doing something like if Joe Blow, developer, wants to come in and build mansions somewhere and wants tax, tax incentive, that's not gonna happen. We're trying to look out for citizens that, you know, are maybe starting off in their careers as a beginning nurse, or beginning teacher, or beginning, I don't know, it could be anyone, it could be people that work at, at tech, people that work in commercial, people that just can't afford the rents, but they would like to live in a community where they work. So I guess what I'm saying is, if, if I supported something, it would probably not be the option one, I might be willing to look at option two and three. And I'd like that cleared up about where the people are going. I don't understand why we keep hearing that they're not settled, I don't get it. And I'm not sure about the, I guess, if Blacksburg, I mean, all that stormwater thing is in Blacksburg's preview, right? It doesn't, I mean, they have to be in charge of it, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Well, my take on it is that the current state of the mobile home park is pitiful, okay? You talk about people in major cities going into the hood, so to speak, if I use that word. When you go into the, and not being critical of the mobile home park, you go in and you think that you were in the hood. I see it as a win-win. For years, the, I guess, the housing, I don't know, Habitat for Humanity, or whatever the group was, they wanted to try to build affordable housing on the lot above Windsor Hills, up there, and if the town would run water out to it, it was in the county, and it fell through, and I think they was looking at a place that on Prices Fort Road, near where the farm, Wallace Farm was, out in there. And so it's been a struggle for them to come together and find an area that could really be redeveloped for workforce housing. There's a lot of benefits, and the benefits is, and especially, and maybe my background's a little different, I grew up poor, and it was so poor that they spread, they spilled it with three O's. It's poor, and it's poof, we were poof, as they say. So I see it as a, as a plus for our, our county. And then if another person coming in with a similar proposal that was gonna build workforce housing in Christiansburg or a low to moderate income, they would be entitled to about the same thing. But if they came in to build a Fox Ridge or a Terrace View, that would be something different, because those prices are driven by rent, you know, so to speak. So I see it, to me, as a, as a plus for our low-income, low to moderate income and our seniors to have nice warm places, places that's gonna have on-site management and so forth, and, and maybe some of the, a few of the residents are, are a little bit of afraid or afraid. afraid or fearful of change. And all change is not bad, a lot of it's good. So, I can support one of these options, I could, I could, I like to support option one, especially when you, when you get to year 11, 12, and 13 and 14. And then, when it comes to like stormwater, and I guess I speak from experience, and I guess Mrs. Adele Sharma done the, I guess, study, was over the study, and I've known Adele long enough that she's not gonna stake her reputation on something that's not gonna work, something that's not gonna meet the needs of town's stormwater plan. Adele is sharp and I respect what she says about the stormwater, regardless of what other people say that, that won't work, 'cause I guess they managed the entire stormwater area of the town, you know. So, I guess in, in discussing this thing, we're probably, from what I hear now, is a, was it a 3-2, I guess? You would be a no, Todd, you would be a no too, wouldn't you? And Chris, you'd be a no, and Mary, I'd be, I think Mary would be an eye, and I would be an eye.
Well, I mean, I could, I could always throw out a motion, but there'd probably be no one to second it. I mean, but if we need a finality to it, I could do that.
And as, I wouldn't mind exploring the EDA and looking at the funding and see if that would be beneficial, which was trying to treat them the same way we treated the folks out on Pepper's Ferry and exploring that more, to see if that's a possibility. And I don't know if that's something that they would be interested in either. I, I wouldn't mind exploring that, but if you wished finality for it, you can make the motion to second it, but I, I might second it, but I'm not gonna vote for it.
Right, I was just trying to.
If you're asking for finality.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how to give them some kind of closure to it, and we don't have two of our members here, so.
Okay, let's, Mr. Park, would you come up and shed just a little bit more light on what was given to us, I guess, in our last work session, so to speak, about this proposal, so, to give it its best shot?
No, I appreciate that, and again, I appreciate the discussion everybody's having here tonight. Of course, we've been working on this for some time, numerous meetings with the town. And I'll just say a couple of things, I, I know that you're in a difficult position, right? And of course, Park, as I said in the work session the other night, when we look to do this affordable housing, one of the things we looked to is your comprehensive plan, and we felt pretty strongly that we were meeting all the goals of the comprehensive plan, and in fact, it went so far as to say, offer financial incentives to do this. But I, I think one of the things to note is, and you've heard me say this before, if affordable housing wasn't an issue here, you'd have plenty of it, and there's a reason that you don't have. And, and it's very clear why, because it's very difficult, as I said in my presentation here a month ago, when you look at the surrounding counties, and you look at the income levels there compared to what you have in Blacksburg, then you look at the rent structure and the cost to build because of land and so forth, the barrier entry is very great, it is very, very difficult. And the only way we could finance these is through the tax credit program, and the tax credit program is set up in a very objective way, a point-scoring way, that we have to be in an area that even though this is classified, this whole area, almost all of Southwest Virginia's rural, Blacksburg was urban to have some of the point-scoring categories that we needed, without getting too far down in the weeds. But I can tell you, without this type of incentive, the project will not work. And unfortunately, it's a, it's an iterative process that I have to go through, I can't come talk to you all until, of course, we find land, we design it, we work through the town, the town rezones it, then the town put forth their incentives, and I apologize, I couldn't get with you all six months ago, but I think the reply would have been, well, let's see what the town does, or let's get further along. And, and that's where we are today. I will say, you know, Mr. Park, I appreciate you bringing up your comments tonight, I, I still think we need some type of financial incentive like this. To your point about the incentives with commercial business, as you said, you've done it with some commercial businesses, but I think you have turned down other commercial businesses. So, I think if you were to offer us the financial incentives, it doesn't mean every project that comes to you in the future, you'd have to. I think you look at each one on their own individual merits when you do it. However, Mr. Chairman, if you want us to go back to the drawing board over the next couple of weeks and work with Mr. Meadows and take into consideration some of the things Mr. Tuck said, I mean, we'd be willing to try to do that the best we can. And I guess if that's the case, and, you know, I would ask that respectfully, maybe you, you table this for tonight and give me the opportunity to do so, certainly that's my request. If you wanna go forward and vote on it, certainly I understand.
Do you have a time limit, time constraints?
Yeah, so here's what we talked about in the work session tonight, as we've turned our application in, along with a number of other applications that's being scored now, okay? But one of the things they look at along with the scoring is the financial feasibility of the project as part of that, okay? So, the opportunity during this month and a half period that they're looking at it, we can come back to them subsequently and provide additional information that would, you know, backstop the pro forma that we put together. And that's, that's where we are tonight. So, at, at the latest, I don't, when is the next meeting, I guess?
The 23rd.
23rd.
And that is a final week, you could still get information, Tom, if we were able to put something together, that they, you know, we could then come back, see what we could work out, if anything, with you all, and if we were able to, we could then submit that, and that would be part of the financial analysis that they would do over this sixth week or so period. But after that, it's gonna be difficult to do it. And again, I want to express thank you for your time. I mean, I know my time is probably not best, especially when I heard budgets tonight and what's going on, but as I said in the work session, probably no time's a good time, right? I mean, I think it comes down to the affordable housing aspect, you look at the various income levels we're serving, it's two projects in one, it's a senior project, you know, it's a family project with 84, 60 units on the senior. And I can't stress enough that, you know, the senior project's out there for 50 years. And even though we showed 30 years, because that's what we profited, the senior, we turned the application in for the seniors, that was to stay affordable for 50 years. I mean, that, you know, that, so, that's where the incentive came in, and that's why I put that little sheet together as an, I guess, an illustrative type example of 15 years for the financial incentive, but you see the benefit after that financial incentive burns off and you go to full assessment, what's there, notwithstanding the fact that you're providing the affordable housing, what's the value on that? And I, certainly, I'm not the one to put the figure on that, you all are. So, again, I'm glad to answer any other questions.
Now, I've got, I've got a couple of questions. What are the size of the homes that you would be if you had a stamp of approval on it tonight?
What are the size of the units?
Size of the units.
Yeah, so, the, the one-bedroom units would be in the 700, 750 square foot range, two bedrooms, probably 9 to 950, and then the three bedrooms, close to 1,200, in addition to the community center and fitness center that we put in there.
Okay, and you say you're gonna put a fitness center?
Yeah, in the community center, that's correct, for the tenants.
For the town?
Yes. And that also houses our on-site leasing and property management people.
But you have no call for anything to be put in for a rec area, that I've heard?
For, for what?
A recreational area. If we got, what, 140 odd houses, it would seem to me that you would, it seems to me that, that you would want to have some kind of a rec area for the people in it, yeah, for a lot of people.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be rubbing shoulders.
Sure.
You know? And from what I've read, the, they're gonna be facing each other, which was a gift from Blacksburg somehow or another, I don't know how that worked, but if those type things are not put in, I don't see how you can expect to gain the type of people that you would want in one of those units.
I don't think it's unusual for any other apartment complexes that we build that's around, I mean, we've, this also has a playground in it, it's got a picnic shelter in it, it's got garden plots that are set aside for the seniors, we're working with the town for a bus stop right there in the area so we can take advantage of the urban transportation, that was something that was very important to us, 'cause many times when you're dealing with the affordable housing, they may not have the vehicles. So, that was another reason for putting, locating it where it is, 'cause we can take advantage of the bus system. So, I, I think what, what we are supplying is very consistent with most apartment housing that you put in, especially, it's probably above and beyond what you see in some affordable housing projects, given that we have to keep the rents, you know, at an affordable level.
So, these were things that you said you talked with Blacksburg about?
Those are things that we are putting in, yes, and they're on our site plan.
These are all single-floor or two-floor units?
Yeah.
How many, are they stacked units, or?
They are on the family units, that's correct, on the senior units are all fourplexes slab-on-grade.
But they're on the senior units?
Yeah, they're all slab-on-grade, that's right, for the senior units.
I mean, I don't understand, is, from what, we were told a couple of weeks ago, had to have that thing by tonight or it wasn't going to work. That was what I understood, and that's pretty, pretty darn close to what we said.
Okay.
Now, suddenly, it's not looking so pretty, so now we can do it in three moments.
Well, I think I said last week in the work session, that during this time period that VHD reviews the projects, that we, if we had the incentive, we would need to provide that incentive to them as part of their underwriting. And certainly, the sooner we get it, if we are gonna get it, makes it easier for them to evaluate it.
And the other, I didn't hear anything about the rec area that is there just for the, whoever may be there, whether it's a man, man and his wife, or man and two kids, or a man and his wife and two, three kids, whatever it may be, they should have someplace that they can get out of those houses that are 1,000-foot square, which is not real big, to where they can get some exercise.
Well, again, put in a playground, there's open area, there's a picnic shelter, there's garden plots, there's a community center, there's a fitness portion to that community center, which is pretty typical with that type of apartment complex. I'm not sure what else.
Did you tell anybody on this board then?
It was on the site plan, I mean.
I think that would be pretty important, if I was trying to get somebody to do something for me, I'd want them to know everything that I was gonna do for them.
Okay. Well, I apologize if I didn't, I, I thought with the site plan and everything, it was pretty clear in our, in our description, but if I didn't, hopefully I've been able to articulate that now.
That's all for the moment, huh? Get tore up and I'll be, meet you on the other side.
Well, I guess my question would be, is there support among the, among us tonight for him to go back and, and try to do some more work, or is that sort of a fruitless thing?
I'm thinking it might have gotten even more fruitless as I asked questions and there were answers there, but was never told us as to what was going to happen. And that should be a lesson from us and from them, as to what we need to know in order to go forward with something like this.
I think he, I think he wanted to table it till the next time.
Yeah, 23rd.
All right. I would vote that we not allow it, we'll see what, what happens, and if it goes, it goes, if it don't, it don't.
So, you're, you're making a motion to not do anything?
That we, that we don't do this.
Are you making a motion to table it, or?
That you don't do it.
That we just don't do it, period.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Can we have a second?
Can we discuss it before, I guess we can't discuss it before we have a second.
Or it dies if there's no second.
I understand, and I guess, I try to think of my fellow, we got two supervisors here that are not here, and I, I think about Annette's reasons, it's a family reason, and that she couldn't be here.
And Matt says it.
I'm not in favor of it, I don't see myself changing, but if I was in their shoes, would I want somebody to say, all right, I want the opportunity, and I hope, especially, you know, Matt had travel plans as well, for their work session, I had a travel plan that'd been set up for two years and wasn't able to come to the work session last Monday. So, I guess, I, when we've got that motion on, I'm gonna let it die, and then I'm gonna make a motion to table it until the 23rd.
Can I make a second to the table?
Well, we gotta, we gotta deal with Gary's first.
First motion has to.
Has to.
If it don't have a second, it dies.
It didn't have a second, though.
The chairman can make that.
Okay, it didn't have a second. Gary, your motion dies. Now, we can entertain Chris's motion.
I will make a motion to table it until the 23rd. I would also ask for us to explore what was done out of Pepper's Ferry, across from Belmont, I mean Bellevue, to see if it's similar. I understand some of Gary's, also his concerns, and then, and I hopefully will be able to address some of those in the, in the two weeks when we come back.
Okay, I can second that.
You second that. And to end the discussion, I'm glad that the, that's a motion and a second to give opportunity to our other two board members to, hopefully they'll be here on the 23rd and have a full board, and then we can, we can take it up, plus with some additional information. Okay, any further discussion?
Do you want to get a question?
Yeah, I'm getting ready, I'm getting ready, I have a clerk call to roll here soon, so, I mean, if there's no further discussion. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Hi.
Mr. Tuck?
Hi.
Mr. Cruz?
Providing that we can get answers to all of these questions that has not been brought forward up until this point, both good and bad, I will, I will vote to do that, but other than, if we're not going to find out the whole truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, then I don't want anything to do with it.
Spits an "I"?
Miss Fitz?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
I'm gonna give you a short version, my "I".
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So, it's tabled until the 23rd, and to give time for, I guess, our staff to look up some information that Chris has asked about the development out of 114.
I heard a couple of things. Gary's asking for more information about the, the project details themselves, so.
And probably, and I'll say this, in the next day or so, if you have particular questions about the project, shoot Craig an email and he can make sure that Mr. Park gets them to be able to respond to them. Is that far enough? Well, could we make sure, check the residents over and make sure they're being taken care of?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Because we continue to have residents who are saying they're not being taken care of.
Right, that's the issue. They keep coming to us or we run into them, they say they're not being taken care of. But I know that that isn't, that's supposed to be the.
The owner's.
The owner's thing, right? But you guys aren't going to sign off on it until that's been taken care of, correct?
Well, the owner takes care of it, that is correct. And I, as, last week in the work session, we provided the relocation plan and the numerous letters that the owner had sent to Matt Hanratty at Neighborhood Services there. But if there's more information we can supply or we haven't answered during this time, we'd be glad to do it, huh? Once I know what all the questions are.
And I want to hear, are we at 100%? We've got everybody ready to move? Or we've got two holdouts and they're, they've not agreed to move or not agreed to sell?
Yeah.
And I believe during the last presentation, you talked about there were some that you worried about moving. I understand that and I get that because some of them may be 40, 50 years old, maybe even 60. But I sure would like to hear because a lot of these folks don't have the money. It's $1,500 probably to move a mobile home. Now, a lot of these folks are living paycheck to paycheck, so I really would like to hear that as well.
Very, I understand, that's all.
And there's not a million, there's not, according to this thing here, there's not many of those left.
No.
There's only seven or eight of them. So it's not like it's, that's the power money.
Yeah, plan that shows 100% of the current residents in there, there.
I want to know also where exactly these areas are going to be located. And I'm hoping that you're not thinking that they're going to be up in the corner somewhere and all the rest of them gets farther away from them as they go. You know, these, these areas for, for recreation should be somewhere within the middle of the subdivision.
Okay.
And if that's not true, then it would be reason for, I would think, for most folks to, to turn it down because there's no reason that if you get this, you know, that's a little honey pot from Blacksburg.
Probably in your, in your site plan, if you had a plan with garden, rec center, whatever, would help our board visualize, you know, what you know.
That's all been submitted to the town, hadn't it?
Yeah.
That's our problem, we can do that, Mr. Creed. Sorry that wasn't clear.
I can reach out to Matt Hanratty, William, and try to get whatever he's.
Okay.
Accumulated on this already too, so.
I think that'd be helpful to talk to him too. Certainly we'd be glad to find any, any additional information we can, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and thank you. The next item in the new business is what national government, let's say National County Government Month, a resolution recognizing it.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, is there any major discussion on this issue? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Hi.
Mr. Creed?
Hi.
Chair Brown?
Hi.
Now, finally, we get to the county attorney's report.
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we thank you. County administrators report.
Mr. Chair, I think I'll continue that trend and not offer a report this evening.
I got to get to the other supervisor, supervises first. Okay, Matt would have to give his them a Skype.
That would be good, though.
Mr. Creed?
No report.
Mr. King?
No report.
Ms. Biggs?
Um, yes, I want to remind everybody the invitation that you got from the Library Board of Trustees for the dessert reception on March 18th, Wednesday, at 7:30 PM at the Christiansburg, at the Christiansburg Library. Please try to attend, it won't be that long and they'll have food and something for you to drink there. They look forward to having you all come and the town councils from Blacksburg and Christiansburg.
Plan and commission should be meeting, I think.
The same time?
I'm not certain as it, that typically it's seven o'clock, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, if you'd be, yeah.
So I'll be here.
Yeah, okay.
Seems like I didn't get, get that invitation. You get one of them?
Mm-hmm. Emily, it sounds like you got to bring ice cream to compete.
Just this past week.
Yeah.
Did you get one?
Yeah, so put down.
Matt, you didn't get none.
Maybe we can have yours.
Yeah.
Did you get one, Chris?
I got one in the mail, I hate to sound, you know, sorry about that, because I did get one in the mail, but.
Maybe I'll get mine tomorrow or something.
Yeah, came in the mail in an envelope this size.
I got this one and I got that one from the chamber.
Okay. But you're welcome to have this because I'll be there.
March 18th at what time?
Um, 7:30. Because the board's going to meet at 7:00 and then the reception will be at 7:30. And then the other thing, I thought was sort of funny, I don't know if you guys checked out your County Connections newsletter, you can either get it in the mail or you can get it on the web, but I noticed that, I think our county administrator must have turned in a picture of us.
No, that lady.
Who did that?
That lady, his aide, you remember she was taking pictures of us?
Okay, anyway, the funny thing about that picture is, if you really look at it, it's, it sort of describes the situation in Richmond because nobody is smiling and everyone is intense. And that's it, that's all I have to say.
I hadn't seen that picture.
It came online and, this is, but his, his aide, you know, gets somebody who's taking pictures of us.
Oh, maybe Craig did.
You take a picture?
That was me, they made that.
Oh.
Because I tweeted it to Ruth.
Oh, it's Ruth's fault.
Okay, Ms. Perkins is out, Mr. Tuck?
Montana was beautiful, but no report otherwise.
Well, I have, I guess, one thing, I guess, is that our fire and rescue people, you know, when you look, there's a number of people, let's see, we lost Paul Harrow, Ronnie Caldwell, you know, and then they were cancer deaths. And then I got to see Jeff McCoy today, who's been suffering with cancer, Adam McCoy, for probably about a year. And when I talked to Jeff today, you can tell it's taking its toll. And he said the cancer, they thought he had him in remission, but his cancer's come back, so he's, just it came from chemo when I talked to him. There's Glenn Wood out of Charles Way that's suffering from esophagus, yeah, cancer and liver cancer. You have Eric Cunningham out Charles Way too, that's suffering. And then there's another member that, who's waiting for some, some treatments to see whether he does have or have not cancer. But I'm talking to Neil a little bit, and I'm talking to him about the safety equipment, the masks that they wear and everything to protect them. But he said regardless, the carcinogens are still in the air. And so it's a very, I guess, dangerous business to be in. And it just seemed like over the past 25 years, there's been a number of our volunteer firemen and rescue people suffering from cancer. So I ask that, that we as a board and as a community, that we keep all our first responders in prior. Because when you think about what they're giving themselves and their families and things, the sacrifices that they make so that we can be safe, so to speak, is that they're, they're giving a lot. And other than that, nobody has anything else, we are adjourned.